You know, what we approved was the hybrid model, which is fifty percent Hawkins. A week with a goal to ship to elementary school to five days a week on the Tuesday after Labor Day. You know, we're going to continue to look at the data. Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Uh, it kind of scares me so that, um, boy, I hope that everyone kind of heard that. I was, uh, okay, so the goal, the goal is to go back or go to five days for elementary school on the eighth of September. But if the data doesn't support that, then that's something we won't do. So we want to ensure that we're going to constantly look at the data, the data that makes sense to us, to our county, and kind of go from there. All right. So the first thing we're going to do is we do have eight folks sign up for public comment. So we're going to allow y'all to speak. Our policy says that you're limited to, we limit comments to five minutes. So I ask you to respect that time, the five-minute time. I'll, I'll time you and kind of give you maybe a little hand gesture if you're in five minutes and some change there because we want to be respectful of everyone's time and have time for everyone to voice their opinion. All right. Board members, do you have anything you want to add before we get started with public? Mr. Silas was asking me about the pledge and it's not on the agenda, but it would be a nice thing to do. So that's a pretty good addition. I like that. So if you'd all join me and stand for the pledge, that's a good idea. Our pledge is to divide our United States of America and ensure the republic, where we're just one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, with liberty and justice as one. All right, so the first person is, is it Denise or Dennis? Ms. Blitzen?
Janice.
Janice? Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse it for me. I'm getting several texts. We might need to check the audio before we start so that everybody at home can hear.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Janice, before we start.
One, two, three, testing.
Y'all, this is the audio is good. That would be good.
Mr. Loder, can you test the audio for us?
I can.
Thank you.
How's that sound? Good. I think we got a couple texts saying that it was good.
Are we ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Janice.
All right.
If you could speak into the microphone, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janice Blitzen and I am a German teacher at Midland Valley High School. When I began teaching in the Aiken-Cali Public School District, I remember being very impressed that unlike many districts, ACPSD starts the high school day relatively late in the morning. Indeed, years of studies have demonstrated that later start times allow teenagers to sleep longer, leading to improved health and better test scores. ACPSD was following the science. I sincerely hope that in regards to the COVID pandemic, ACPSD continues to do that. This virus has only one function, to propagate itself. And the way it does that is by infecting ever more people as long as we allow it to do so. The only way we can make it go away is with a vaccine and that through our actions. Mr. McMaster may be our governor, but he is no scientist. And his proposal to open schools five days a week for all students as of September eighth goes against much of the scientific advice. I sent you last week, I asked that we not physically return to school. The first of which is from the World Health Organization. It states that reopening should only occur when positive test rates are at five percent or lower for at least fourteen days. When South Carolina reopened earlier this spring, it had not met that guideline and we are now seeing the results. As of yesterday, both South Carolina and Aiken's rates at sixteen percent and eighteen percent respectively are over three times the recommended rate. Why then would we want to add fuel to the fire by reopening schools in this environment? Additionally, the CDC has indicated that before reopening, a state should have a downward trajectory of new daily cases for fourteen days. But South Carolina's trajectory has instead been upward. From June first to July twentieth, South Carolina's daily cases increased by a staggering five hundred and seventy-five percent. Again, why make a bad situation worse by reopening schools? COVID is a dangerous virus with a growing list of dangerous side effects. COVID is also a deadly virus. While between four and fifteen out of ten thousand people who contract in each year die of the flu, in the U.S., COVID's mortality rate is twenty-six times that, meaning that out of ten thousand people who contract COVID, three hundred and ninety will die. And our ACPSD community is especially vulnerable with large percentages of folks coming from those groups who are being disproportionately impacted by COVID. Let's talk about transmission. Recently, a very rigorous and very large South Korean study concluded that, quote, "Children in middle and high school," unquote, "are," quote, "even more likely to infect others than adults," unquote. So think about that. During every class change, the hallways at my high school look like the Atlanta freeways at 5:00 P.M. on a Friday. There is no room for social distancing in the halls or the classrooms. And even if some students choose to learn remotely, I am worried that such congestion will enable the virus to spread like wildfire among the students who are at school and then into the community, affecting not only parents and siblings, but also our more vulnerable folks like grandparents and the immunocompromised. I hope that we in Aiken will continue to follow the path forward that science, rather than politics, prescribes. Science doesn't care who you like, what you like, or for whom you vote. Science doesn't care if you are a believer or a non-believer. Science simply seeks to empirically investigate the world as it is and draw rational conclusions. Right now, the science, the scientific facts say that we cannot open our schools safely. Until we can, we should offer a robust online education this fall for all of our students. Yes, there are challenges, but we can and must meet them. It is our responsibility to ensure the academic success of all of our students. But it is also our obligation to keep our ACPSD community safe. If that means remote learning, then that is what we must do. Thank you very much for allowing me to voice my thoughts on this very important topic.
Thank you, Ms. Blitzen. Uh, the next person is, is it Samantha?
Cheedum.
Cheedum? Thank you, Ms. Cheedum.
You're welcome.
And we're still getting some comments here at home, so if you can speak to the mic the best you can.
Is this better? Can everybody hear me?
Maybe a little bit closer, just one mic.
Is this better? Uh, hello, my name is Samantha. I am actually the executive director for our local Boys and Girls Club here in Aiken and I came to be the boys and children that we actually service. Most of the children that are in our program are below the poverty level. And we actually opened our summer camp for twenty children. Within those twenty children, we have been open since May the eleventh and our last day is August the seventh. Our children have had symptoms of COVID-19. The children that are in our program, our first day when we opened, those children, emotionally, they weren't ready. However, they were able to actually get on board with it. Most of them were just excited to be outside the house and have a safe place to go and to actually have meals prepared for them. Now, I understand that some people don't want the children to go to school, but I'm on the front line of those children who don't necessarily have the means and technology to create or actually complete the distance, the distance learning package because they don't have internet at home, they don't have laptop, or they don't have the parents that are actually able to help them. So that's when my facility or my organization comes into place because we were actually able to open and help some of those children finish those packets so that they can actually have some academics while school was out because it was left up to parents and the parents weren't able to help them because maybe their education level or they just didn't have the technology or the equipment that was needed to actually help them complete this. And also, it breaks my heart when we're open and we have some of our children are sneaking into the cafe area just to get food. So if school is open, at least we know while they're in school, they are with safe adults that are able to actually help them create that atmosphere of love and respect and they're being taken care of and they're being fed. And even if school is open, we know three extra hours, they can come to the Boys and Girls Club where they're with those adults that are creating those supportive relationships. They feel safe, they're getting snacks. So, and I do understand, like I said, that some people have anxiety about the virus, but some of the kids that we service, if they contact the, contract this virus, they, they're not even worried because of what they deal with on a daily basis. If they contract the virus, at least they know they will be taken care of and they will be fed. So the more face-to-face instruction we can offer these kids or safe place we can, for these kids to go would be better because at least they, like I said, they will feel safe emotionally and physically and we know they will be fed. And I get it, yes, the government helped with the release of extra food stamps for those kids that were on the free or reduced plan. But like I said, some of the parents that we service, they don't do right by the children. So just because they received it doesn't mean that they're going to have their child's interest, their best, their child's best interest at heart. So at school, like I said, we know that they will be fed, they will be taken care of, they will be able to build those safe, supportive relationships. And even with the teens that we service, our summer camp consists of more teens than younger children. The teens could actually stay home because they are of age to stay home. So I asked them, I was like, why are you guys coming to the Boys and Girls Club when you guys could actually be home? Miss Samantha, we're tired of sitting at home. We actually want to get out with our peers. We want to have face-to-face interactions with other adults and our peers so that we can feed off of each other because there's, there's the phone, there's TikTok, but we want more than just TikTok. We want that human connection. We want those adults that believe in us, that empower us to be the best we can be. And most of the time, we expect that to be the parents, but in some children's case, that's the parents. Those are those loving teachers, the guidance counselors, principals, mentors that these children are actually able to leave their house and build those relationships with. And that's all I have to say and I thank you guys for letting me express my opinion.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Patterson, Scott Patterson?
My name is Scott Patterson. I'm a parent of three teenage girls, which two of them attend Aiken High and one tall pine school. Um, first, let me say I support the teachers. I support and accept every view on this. I'm not going to judge, I'm not judging anybody. Um, you know, I understand there's different points of view for different people, completely understand that. I just want to present my point of view from my perspective and that's exactly what I'm going to do. My understanding is the board is, is here to express the intent of our community, of Aiken County. When the surveys went out, I, I understand that basically we had a virtual option, we had a traditional option, and then it said both. And now, when I come tonight, it's basically two virtual options. We have a hundred percent virtual and then we have two days a week and three days virtual, which to me, if you're in school less than you're at home, it's not traditional. Uh, it's, it's a step in the right direction, but as Samantha just said, and, and, you know, there are thousands of kids that are going to be left behind. They've already been out of school since March. If you tack on another year, I heard the previous person say, which I respect her opinion, that we need certain conditions met. Those conditions are impossible. We will never be in school if you lay out eight thousand conditions from the WHO, from all these different organizations. The science is too confusing. If you look at the facts, if you look at the actual data, I don't want to quote any studies because everybody can come up with their own study from their own doctor, their own political point of view. I don't want to get political. I just want to look at the numbers. In South Carolina, based on July fifteenth, the CDC or DHEC, there are zero deaths as of July fifteenth out of all our children. If you look at California, nine of the children, zero deaths in that state in children under the age of seventeen. South Carolina is under the age of twenty-five, actually under the age of forty-six, there are zero deaths. So if you look at the numbers, this isn't affecting our children. Not to say it can't, there are always outliers and there are always exceptions to that rule. As a parent, I'm probably the most protective parent you will meet, but when I see the toll this takes on my children sitting at home, isolated, on their phones, can't leave their house, can't do anything. My sixteen-year-old, I've noticed some difference. My fourteen-year-old, more of a difference. My twelve-year-old, it's amazing to see her today as to where she was in March. As a parent, we weigh all these factors. I want my kids, kids to be happy, healthy, and I want them to be able to go out and learn. It's the one, it's their, our most precious asset. If they're not in school, a year to a child is an extreme amount of time. I have resources. I can send my kids to private school. I just would implore this board, and I'm not saying all kids have to be in school every day. That's absurd to say everybody has to go to school five days a week. I just think it needs to be an option. The parents can decide whether they're comfortable sending their kids to school. I think you've done a great job. You presented two options, but where is the option for the kids, for the parents and the kids that want to go to school? For the first time, I asked my kids, I was like, well, you ready for school? They're excited. They want to go to school for the first time in their life. I want them to go to school. I want to have the option to send my kids to school. And I think it's important this board provide that option and let the parents decide. I understand the social distancing aspect, but if everybody is going virtual, then we won't have an overcrowding problem. It would still be fifty percent or we could cap it. But I agree, the Surgeon General came out today and said he wants kids back in school. Our governor said he wants kids back in school. The president has said it. The American Academy of Pediatrics have said they want the kids back in school. And I think that's the goal. I think everybody's on the same page. We want safety, true. I understand teachers' concerns with safety and, and, you know, not wanting to be exposed to this. I understand that. There are other people, you know, when we go out, there's food on the shelves, there's gas at the gas station, you can watch TV, you can have power. There are people out there working every single day and we call them essential workers. Everybody is an essential worker. You ask any person or any child, if their parent is an essential worker, I guarantee they're going to say yes because they're putting food on the table and they're providing. Everybody's essential. A teacher is an essential worker. Your job is to teach children. I'm at work every single day, closing lines because people need money. Can I get exposed to this? Yes, there are risks with everything. So I don't really know what the answer is, but I do think it should be an option that we have full-time enrollment. As to the virtual learning, I can just speak from what I did last year with my children. I worked every single packet with them. I come home every night exhausted from work and have three hours of homework and a meal. That's an hour for each student. These packets were not helpful, they did not learn, they didn't correspond with the stuff they learned at school. And it was hours of me explaining, one example, my oldest, DNA and RNA replication. I majored in science, I have a zoology degree. I come home and it takes me an hour to review the packet to be able to then go back to my child and say, okay, this is what we're doing here and this is how it happens and this goes here and this goes here and this does that. Okay, Jen, thanks. I've been looking at this all day. I have no idea.
You're getting close to your time.
I understand. So the stuff they're learning is complicated stuff. The kids need to socialize, they need to be around their peers, and I would just hope that this board puts an option out there that reflects what the majority of Aiken County parents put on their surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Blitzen?
I would like to thank y'all for allowing me to speak to that. I came up here supporting my teachers. I was not going to tell them. But I feel that everyone needs to hear from a single parent point of view. I spoke with a lot of my teacher friends, my parents, church members, and all of us agree one thing. Yes, the kids need to go back to school. Yes, they need to be with their peers and the teachers and they need to see their loving teachers because I have plenty of them that even, that even teacher mentor has called and asked to check on them. So, yes, I agree one thing, the kids need to go back to school. The one thing I disagree with is one hundred percent because I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. My daughter graduates this year. If she goes to school five days a week and she gets sick, she's going to bring home to the only parent that is walking to put the food on her table, to take care of her and her daughter, to bring it home to her grandmother, who is having to raise my kids. So five days a week, I totally disagree with, there's more of a chance for these kids, these teachers, to bring home to their families and their small kids and their parents and their families. But it's too much exposure. The vision of the middle, of the young, of the people, of the children, of the people who are in the middle, 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 of the people